You max late rest?
What's up, everybody? This is the poker coaching study session. They were here with Said. We took the first place in the wonderful uh eighty-eight dollar tournament, so let's have a quick look at how it went. So, we began with. A good old king jack off. I wonder if they're gonna one raise and.
Horrible flat, I know.
Looks like we call. Is it a good call?
No.
And one.
Maybe can free bet a sliver. I think it's too early position, though. You prefer king queen off. But I think it might do it a sliver.
It's three better fold. That's what I.
Yeah.
So we do the one in a hundred times play. Nice. The Louis Philippe. Method.
The sliver, see the green here?
Yeah, that's the node we're at.
Yeah. That's it.
That's point what, point oh one combo.
That's where we are.
I was gonna bluff it off, I'm telling you, whatever the board.
Uh-oh.
I know, I know.
Okay, so do we need to step our feet down and say this is enough?
Oh, this is definitely a fold.
If it wasn't already.
If it was, if it wasn't.
Okay, okay, so. Old spoilers. Two point one, what are you gonna do here? Now, please tell me you're gonna three bet a little bit.
I three bet, I three bet.
Okay, huh. Oh, four bet. He puts your nose in it, hmm.
Well, you were bluffing, so. You're gonna fall.
Watch this.
Are you really out here calling? Okay, well.
I, I'm telling you, I, I played it bad.
Both you and him are, are, are quite. Like he four bets his jack, why would he four bet his jack? Does he know you, Said?
Uh. Maybe he knows.
Of course he doesn't know him.
Uh, the four bet, we don't see it. Oh, you're supposed to call this thing sometimes, okay, okay. Pretty nasty. Okay, so we get this board, not too bad. He's all in, we're gonna just call. Then hit the heart, oh, Said. Okay, okay. Can't say you messed up that much and, and like you. You three bet, which I like, and then.
Is the four bet GTO by the opponent?
Ah, no, I don't think so.
It can't be that bad, no?
I think it's pretty weak.
It's, it's a trash hand to do a four bet with.
You have a, you have the blocker. You block jacks, block aces.
The only thing you're blocking are the hands that you want him to fold.
There's actually only a sliver here.
Yeah, I was gonna say you got the blocker. Like ace queen, ace queen's better, like.
E P against T P, I think it's really out of line, but.
It looks, it looks like ace queen's better, though.
Looks like both, both plays are a thing. Okay, so Said. You got one hundred thirty big blinds now and you feel like the king of the world. This guy. Goes all in. With a bounty, it's the bounty tournament, right?
Yeah.
Okay, phew. So. In the side there.
You're hoping that no one else has anything good, okay?
Yeah.
I mean, let's do some maths, like how often does he have to be good for this to be a, a good play?
Go ahead, break out the calculator, Lewis.
So he's what, he's risking a hundred and four to, to win, like, like, like four bigs?
Bro, there's no, there is no mathematics that you can pull out. That are gonna make this even like mildly okay.
Yeah, so.
It's a bit wild, right?
So he's, so he's risking a hundred and four to win, like, what, one point eight, two point eight, like, let's say three, like, 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 like. Like four point five, he's risking a hundred and four to win four point five and like. The bounty, what's that worth, like a quarter of a starting stack? I don't know.
Yeah.
This tournament, I was hunting bounties, I can tell you that.
I mean.
I, like, look, I like you V Pipping. Um, but, I mean, if you really want to, like, put pressure with a hand like this, make it like five or six or something.
Yeah, that's a little wiser.
I mean, to be honest, I pretty muck, like, like, we have to get, we have to hope that one, two, three, four, five players don't come at us. I just told her.
If you make it six, they was thinking, get away with what? The same idea here.
I would definitely say V pip at least, I mean, like, just. It's gonna cost you very little for an opportunity at winning like money.
Win six is awful, though.
Oh, it is, it's very bad, you're right, it is.
I warned, I warned Louis before, I look at him.
I was, oh my goodness.
See, this is good, perfect, you didn't jam, this is great, you have an ace, that's a reasonable blocker, just min raise, now you've isolated him into a pot. Just put him all in on any flop, it doesn't matter, yeah, call.
Yes, that's what I, that was the plan for this one.
Ah, there you are.
No, he has the three, he has the three.
This guy has a tough skin.
Yeah.
Uh, why two?
Hey, it should be three and a half, right?
It should be three, yeah.
You're just not generating folds with two, cuz he's already got. If you wanna break out the calculator, Lewis, how, how often is he, how often is he folding when you min raise blind versus blind and he's already got a blind in there?
I mean, it depends on the player's side, some people will way, way overfold, some people will call six two off. You know, it really depend, I probably limp this personally, because it's like.
I think.
Cuz it's like a middling of the range, I think it's like a middling of the range hand, but if the guy's super nitty, I, I just raise everything, right?
Yeah, I don't hate limping it.
That's my default in that spot, personally.
Yeah, me too, I agree. Buddy, I mean, you can raise this, it's just when you raise blind versus blind, you need to be making it like three or three and a half or something.
It just kinda sucks this hand to like raise and then get free bet, you know? So that's why I limp.
Okay, so you raised pre-flop, why did you check? As the aggressor, you actually, you, you had a, this is a reasonable flop heads up. Like, you have two overs and you picked up a gut shot.
Uh, I think I, I don't remember, I think I was planning to check raise or I don't remember, yeah.
I think a check raise would be decent here, you know, you don't mind being pushed off this hand.
I was, I think I was putting two, three tapers and this one, I think I checked and I wanted to check raise and I think I even missed the check raise.
So you see, it is raising thirty-four percent of the time, it's using three point five sizing, if you do raise. It actually polarizes quite heavily, like this ten big blind is pretty, pretty wild. I never find that. I do find a lot of, uh.
Ah, savage.
I mean, Galen, if it's polarized, maybe this board isn't actually that good for us.
Oh, I think it's just contested, I think it's just contested, a lot of his calls kind of follow along these lines. Similar to like if you were to raise the cutoff for the button and you get like an eight high flop, two tone or something. You know, you're gonna have really polarizing sizings on that because it converges with a lot of the big blind calling range.
I think we're gonna limp a lot of our ten X though.
Well, yeah, it would have, well. Yeah, yeah, you would, but you're also raising hands that beat just random tens.
I mean, it's a common theme on ten high boards, right? Although it's a little weird, like, sometimes these ones out of position, if it's like hijack button or whatever, we're betting small a lot, so it's kinda different. From that.
Oh wait, what happened? We just folded the turn, right? Okay.
Yeah, folded.
Oh, it's a Said run.
He is.
You guys are gonna have fun.
Oh, my goodness.
I closed my eyes, I can tell you that.
I'm gonna close your eyes.
What tournament is this?
It's an eighty-eight dollar PKO.
Alright, cool.
I don't know, man, like. If I look at a guy's stats, his HUD, and he's just like completely out of line, I do call these spots sometimes, but. I think it's a, I think it's a stretch to click the call button here.
I mean, we, we're losing to a rag ace, that's.
How many start stacks is the forty-three bigs?
This is like a starting stack, Said's got two, so that's like a starting stack.
Might be too much, I don't know, it's tempting.
Yeah, two bounties, that's what I was saying, like, I would kind of just defer to like the guy's behavior, if he's out there hunting with like. Ridiculous hands, yeah.
If he's on thing, you gotta call here, but if he's not too wide.
If the guy hasn't given me any indication that he's like overly aggressive and he shows up with like king jack, king ten here sometimes. Or queen ten, queen jack.
Take a note and then, then you know.
Yeah, I, I think just standard conditions I'm folding, though.
I think you're gonna see ace, king, ace queen a lot here, though.
You should, you should, Lewis, you definitely do.
Yeah.
See, see, when I see pocket fours here, like, kinda reinforces the call.
Then you're happy you called, for sure.
And, uh, should, should he be shoving pocket fours, sir?
It's, it's a bit wide, it's completely disrespectful when he's covered by a guy by two X, like Said opening, he just completely disregarded Said's open.
Yeah, it's a bit of a stretch, right? That's why you don't wanna make these big shoves.
You could fly, you could click it and fold, I think shoving is a little out of line.
I'm a, I'm a fan of, I'm a fan of cold calling it there. And if Said were to come back over the top, I would just fold.
Yeah, but the, the weird thing is, though, Said will like. Call quite often in that case, right? And then if you don't flop a set, you're not gonna realize very well.
Yeah, you know, it's.
But so, so what, so what, shove sixes, plus, plus ace jack plus, then some suited, some suited broadways?
That's a, that's, that's closer, I still think sixes is pretty, pretty courageous, so, I'll say.
And pairs are good, maybe sevens, but, yeah, it's, it's interesting.
So probably that's small here. Probably check is fine as well.
Check. Yeah. Both seem good. Sport's so dry, I don't mind just throwing out a bet.
Yeah, they shouldn't have, they shouldn't have many deuces at all. Kinda like a bet here.
They're saying you can bet, you can check.
Again, they're just not gonna have three X, or they shouldn't, and we have all the overbet.
Well, yes, you gotta fold, man.
Yeah, these spots are annoying, like, you know the guy's not gonna really show up with anything good most of the time, but. Can't really do anything about it, just that flop, I guess, is how you combat it.
I like a shelf here, yeah.
Yeah.
Church, it's close, come back, come back.
How do we lose?
Yeah. Lost to that.
Jack squeeze, all in or just squeeze? I think a win.
All in's probably not bad.
Uh, can we get away with like?
I like, I like using, uh.
The thing is, it looks, it looks.
If you make it eight and a half, it's a little face up, but also.
It looks weak as a shelf, it looks weak as a shelf.
Yeah.
And big, and under the gun to come along because. His range is tight and he has ace queen, ace jack, jacks. I wanted to. Look like I have like nines, tens, eights, something like that.
It is a PKO, right, like.
Yeah, he's gonna haunt me, and I already had a bounty, so my bounty would be good than everyone, I think.
Yeah, I'm sold, fine, jamming's good, I still kind of try to get milky with it sometimes. Cuz I mean, the hands that he's calling your jam with, he's typically gonna continue or maybe re-jam. With like, like if he has jacks there, what's he gonna do? It's not like he's folding.
But if he has like eights or nines, you just let him click call if you're all in, it's kinda.
Kinda nice, but he also, he also might fold.
He might. He, he might fold if you make it eight, though.
I know what you're gonna say, Louis, don't kill me with the bad sides.
Yeah, what's the sizing?
What, what the hell are you doing, man?
My side, yeah, yeah, I know, I know.
I mean, it's not too big of a deal, but.
I'll just say, this is like, you, you can't say like our opponents don't notice, cuz like I'm at your tables and I am paying like such attention to sizing tells because I think they're really common. It's like when I see someone go two, two point five, two point eight, I'm like, alright, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna nail this guy. Yeah, like I'm gonna nail this guy, like I'm gonna fold really strong hands to these.
Counter, counter to that, I know some people are watching, sometimes I do it on purpose.
Hmm.
Yes.
If they're gonna cool the bigger.
I know, you know, I know.
Yeah, they know that I know that they know.
Eh, I just take that out of your game, just like have a standard open size, you can focus on your strategy.
Yeah, why try to balance that?
You, you're also like playing a one-way game, like you, you're playing a guy who's watching like WWE wrestling, eating a, eating a bag of chips, clicking buttons. And you're over here trying to play leveling wars with him, like, guy's not paying, he's not paying attention at the time.
No, but like, I, I've heard a lot of professionals debate this point, you know, if you got a strong hand and like, and that some donkey's gonna call three X, the same raise, they're gonna call a two X. Like, why not make it bigger with your value?
It's, it's a retardant, Louis. Just turns your hand face up.
I mean, I think this is more of a, I think this is more of a live thing, though, rather.
I would agree, Louis, I would agree, it makes more sense in a live cash environment. Or even live tournament.
But like, I watch people do this in my life tournaments all the time, and I make big folds to them, and I'm just like always right, and then like I get to showdown, they have queens. And I'm like, yeah, like I'm, I'm, I'm not playing.
Yeah, but that's, that's a wreck, though, no?
Right, what I'm saying is they're doing it and I'm making correct folds to them, like they are getting something up, even if they think like, oh my god, no one's paying attention, like. People are paying attention to something.
That is correct. Live is. I agree.
Guy had ace game, didn't three bet.
Cuz anyway, I basically just think that like playing good poker gives you like all the edge you need, like playing good poker just obliterates people, so.
Yeah. Oh, wow, this is a dream spot.
What do we, what do we do?
Uh.
Lose, you lose.
That's for a refund.
Rig.
It's a, it's a, it's fine, but it's an optional squeeze, you don't need to take it, but it's an optional squeeze.
I thought about it, but I think I had some notes and one of them that they were pretty good, so I was kind of. Taking a cautious route.
Check, 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 check. Now you. Are you not supposed to ballerize here? Or? Are you just trying to get tall?
Away.
Queen jack is there.
Eh, queen jack's not particularly relevant, um. I think you can go a little bigger, I think like the smallest size I'm gonna use here is like thirty-three percent.
Do we bluff here? No. Like a six six?
Yeah, you can bluff here sometimes, right? After check, 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 check.
It's four away, so maybe, maybe, you know.
I mean, yeah, you don't bluff a lot.
You bluff with like a.
You're chopping with the eight.
Back seven?
Okay, so maybe size up a little bit.
Put it in the machine.
It's four away.
Four way.
Oh, then, yeah.
I, I think that third pot is a good size to just like. Get called by some king X that checked the turn.
Is there a reason why you're opening jack then out?
Who was he in big blind in the? In the big blind?
It's probably okay, I don't think it's too bad.
It's close. It's lever, yeah.
I think, yeah, I don't think it's bad, especially with the big blind, but now what do you do?
PKO and you cover O.
This, this, I really like.
Now you fold.
I think this is one of those spots that I prayed.
Oh, I think you fold.
I like folding.
You're opening cuz you cover him, but you don't wanna see the aggression from him, you wanna like.
Oh, no, yeah.
Stack him post.
You wanna see, you wanna see a call.
We wanna, yeah, exactly, we wanna hit the flop and we wanna see a jack or a ten on that flop mainly, or nine eight seven.
Good call.
Yeah, I don't know, I would call this, I would call this lucky.
I mean, when we're already like a solid pip and a half out of our open range, we can fold and jam.
Yeah, I don't know what the guy's doing jamming ace five either, like, that's just.
Pretty ridiculous.
Totally disrespecting your E P range.
Ace five does go crazy sometimes, no?
Not fifteen big blinds for CP, though, you're right.
Versus button versus cutoff.
It is a good combo, though, Lewis, it does definitely, like when you're deeper, it does some non-all-in three betting.
Yeah, 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 from, especially from a big blind versus E P.
He should have, he should have clicked it to five and then, uh.
There you go, Danny.
Oh, that's gangster, that's gangster, I actually don't hate that.
Said?
Yes.
Why do you size up here? What's appealing to you about either this flop, this type of?
I'm not gonna win with the ten high, I size up.
You could bet, honestly, you could bet small here, I guess. I, I, um, these queen high, low, low textures do have some large betting.
Might actually be good.
Yeah, I just don't think that's combo.
You typically size up diamonds here, right? You have like almost no good turn card.
Yeah, I was gonna say, like.
See it as the opposite, like you just get so many cheap folds, like you can get folds from jack high, from some weak king highs. Like this can can just throw out a cheap bet and like who gives a shit if it gets through, like.
Yeah, 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 that's kinda, I'm kind of in Tim's shoes here, where I think you should just throw a small bet, now, maybe you had a. If you had a little more connectivity and maybe some backdoor equity, I don't hate sizing up then.
Yeah, if it's like queen, queen nine eight, something like that.
Yeah.
Well, that's like, yeah, the nuts, but, yeah.
Alright, so yeah, not, not.
Too many hands bet big here?
I definitely do think there's some sizing up.
It's queen?
It's gonna be a very small range, I, I, I think just bet small with range, yeah.
Yeah, I must say no.
It polarizes a little bit, not much, though, it's more rangy than anything.
Kings. King specifically. Queen jack, ace queen.
Just bet small with range, man.
Why not king queen, but queen jack and ace queen?
I think, uh, for board coverage, the king coming off is covered by your pocket kings, so like you wanna have strong hair, hands when a. King turns, when a jack turns, when an ace turns, and so you're covering that via ace queen, queen jack, kings.
Yeah, he's gonna float some king X, I think, if he bets small also, so I guess you wanna be unblocking king X, maybe? If you're gonna choose big?
Maybe. So, range bet, small. Um, jack high against a big blind, we wanna bet the lot here, no? Just see that's small, is this a small spot?
Small's fine. The deuce is pretty bricky and the gut shot's not that relevant, so I think it's gonna lead us towards small bets.
I hope I did a bit.
It's cuz it's only, um, six handed.
You call run six handed?
It's just cuz it doesn't have a post hop for, exactly, so it's eight max, you just have to run it as. Yeah, starting with the low jack. Alright, tell me if I'm crazy, jack, seven deuce would be a little bit more live of a texture and have a little bit more big betting because the gut shot between the jack and the seven is more relevant? Do you think that's? A fair hypothesis?
Oh, there's, there's quite a lot of big betting on this board.
But, yeah, it's more connected, maybe.
That makes sense to me, Tim.
Anyhow, range back here. Oh. So you don't need to check here. You really need to arrange that.
This is against, uh, it's dead small blind, right?
Alright, did I check? Oh. That, that tick.
Uh. We should have bet the flop.
Yeah.
Two point two, um. We get this dirty board. Against a big blind?
Bet fifty-five. Or check, actually, actually, no, I mean, check, I mean, check. I think king queen, you, you can bet big.
I think.
We have a lot of showdown.
You wanna diamond here, no?
Diamond to check or diamond to bet?
Diamond to bet.
You ever get to just bet small?
Yeah?
Yeah, just like one.
And I think I bet this one on this one.
Damn, look, someone's, someone else has logged in?
Well, it's because I have a server. But I don't go through the server for the study session.
Oh, what happened? I bet this month?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, I followed.
That's fine. Arrange bet, yeah. So. Think I like their raise here?
Yeah, I think I like a raise as well. But like, it's a suited combo.
Jack nine suited is raising for sure, jack eight, I don't know.
Could just be a limp. Probably mostly limp. Yeah.
Majority call.
A big theme, blind be blind is, you, you, uh. You could, you just limp a lot of your suited hands and then you raise like the trashy suited hands. That's quite a good theme.
Alright.
And then like the offsuit hands with like blockers. I mean, this is a good board to bet. Did we limp or?
Uh, no, no, he raised.
Yeah. I think with jack high, backdoor flush, we kinda just wanna get rid of. Better hands.
Yep.
Like, like queen high, king high's probably not folding, ace high's probably not folding.
Got it, in practice, or you can't get them up king highs, right?
Um, I mean, like if they fold like queen seven, that's great.
Yep.
Even if they fold like ten high, that's quite good.
Yeah, pocket deuces.
I don't think deuces is folding.
You never know.
I mean, deuces in fury probably should jam over the link.
We don't really eject here, it's a bet and then. It's like bowler, right? Small or fifty percent pot? Even bigger sometimes.
Makes sense, pre-flop aggressive around a paired board, you have the huge range advantage.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like the check, it's, that's a.
King comes. Check, check.
We could just like almost range bet this, cuz it's just so good for us and so bad for him.
King's gonna be a really good card, cuz we might check a lot of king highs here.
Oh, I take it back, stopper doesn't.
Yeah, but I think like we're supposed to be betting here, right? Yeah, and then we go from this, so the chicken range. I think if we see that.
What type of, what type of hands do we check the most on the floor?
Twenty-five percent call, then king of clubs. Just for fun. Uh. See, we are kind of timid with it, we're mostly checking again here. So the king is not so great for us, why is that?
I think it's cuz when we check and they check back, they're gonna check back all their king X.
He changed the note, Louis changed the note.
Yeah, they just have all the king X, which they checked back, which we would have bet on the floor.
Yeah, they, they bet some ace X for value, but then king X is middle range, they check it back.
Hey, so now the king comes, the majority is check?
I mean, just to give up hand now, I guess. Yeah, just.
Yeah, you beat some garbage, you think could affair on the river.
I mean, on, on this river, like even queen high can probably. I mean, on, on this river, like even queen high can probably cool now if you bet. Like some percent of the time.
So we got the jack eight suited. Hearts. This is pretty rare. Looks like we're going either sixty percent or probably just forty percent.
You can click the size and it'll show like uh the range. Uh.
There you are. We have to bluff it. Majority of the time, right?
I mean, it's like zero point two combos.
We have to find a bet along this whole story. Oh my goodness, this is what we found.
Uh, I, I, I'd be really interested to find out why, what, why, why this raise?
Yes, please. Sayid, why would you raise here?
Why do you, why do you guys hate this?
Uh, I raised because I, because I checked the flop, I am representing the five. And I don't wanna, I'm winning with jack high.
You think you have fives that are check, 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 check? Are you gallin' or what?
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, I think, I think more relevant is you can have.
I can be gallin'.
No, you cannot. I think it's more relevant to have some eight, seven here.
Yeah, 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 that's where I'm going with it, Tim. That's where I'm going with it.
Like, I can see you ending up here with eight, seven.
Yeah, me too.
So, so what? You're trying to fold out a six?
You're trying to fold out anything.
Yeah, with king.
But like what queen, like, what, like what are you trying to fold out?
Yeah, literally, if he decides to bluff here with, with queen high or ace high, like.
Cuz, cuz he would have bet a five, he would have bet a six, like, like, I mean, he would have bet a five, he would have bet a king, he would have bet a nine, he would have bet a nine.
Slow down real quick. Okay, so let's just walk through the action. Nice and slow, like.
You're freaking out, chill.
Yeah. Take a chill.
Get a word in, bro.
So he bet, so he opened EP and then it was check, check flop. Check, check, turn.
Oh, we're big blind. That makes sense.
Yeah, and then it goes, then it goes.
This is blind be blind.
Oh, it's, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so it's BVB. So, it goes limp, check. Yeah, cuz there's only five, oh, no, 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 who raised? Cuz there's five two in there.
Both Galen and I don't know the action. Alright, it has to be limp, check, bet one call, right?
Well, that, okay, I thought it was an EP open, I'm sorry. Yeah, cuz EP open would make sense.
It was raised.
On the flop?
It was right.
It was raised. How is there only five bigs if it was raised?
It's a single raise call. And it's check three.
Three.
Would you make it fucking two?
He made it two.
Yeah, he made it two.
What the fuck is with these people making it two, man? Stop making it two in small blind, people. It's not a thing. Friday, guys. It's Friday, everyone just relax. It's not a thing.
What about heads up? What about heads up?
Arnie, thank you.
But uh, I do agree, like, I, I'm kinda with Tim. Like, you could easily have like seven, eight here sometimes. And what is he betting with here on the river after it goes check, check? Check, check. And then you check and he stabs small. He's not stabbing small with boats. He's not stabbing small with. Um, flushes. So like, this is.
Six, right?
A six or an ace high, maybe?
Six, maybe, maybe ace high. So like, I think a, uh, I think a large raise like this is go, or completely air, right, Roger?
Pretty good, right?
I think a large raise like this on the river. Um.
Yeah.
It's not bad. I don't think it's bad at all. But yeah, I mean, folding out a six would make sense. What did the solver machine, what did the slot machine say about it?
The raise on the river?
Yeah.
I'm gonna say, I don't think we have an eight, but we have plenty of flushes, so it's fine.
Yeah, so give him like a nonsense small bet.
I think we've folded out a lot of shit, which is worse than us. Like a lot of like ten high, eight high.
Well, we can't exactly catch with jack high though.
No, we can't. We cannot. I mean, I actually really wonder like. This is a kind of a cool rebuff spot. Like, if someone's ever a little spazzy and they're bluffing with like queen high, ace high, and they are never gonna. Re-re bluff you or call you, like.
Challenge is you just don't end up in this node with anything. It's such a.
I think, I think, I think we want a club if we're gonna raise the river.
Maybe, maybe. Um, so.
Uh, see, that's very, I think that's why it's a club in your hand. You know, you have a reason to do it when you have a club in your hand.
Did you, uh, did you look at maybe giving him a more primary sizing on the river? Like, does it, it doesn't ever bet thirty-eight percent, does it?
Uh, it's.
So give him the five sizing cuz it's a, it's just, it's a, it's a little more like representative. Okay, so there is not much bluff raising here, but there is some and it's coming from ace highs. And it's picking the sevens and the eights. So like, there is some supporting evidence that pulling from sevens and eights is not a bad idea. And you're kinda blocking the hero calls. I guess with the ace is why maybe choosing the ace. But okay, so like, you got queen six, which is. A river pair that is raising some. Queen five, which is trips. It's just not really much in this range.
You wanna block the boat, is that what they're saying?
Yeah, I guess it does some of that on the river, Louis. You know, when you. It likes to bluff sometimes on the river. When you, you block the boat, I guess.
I mean, yeah, river, rivered six is full is like a pretty real possibility here, so. That's like, I'm not saying it's the only thing I'm ever gonna bluff with, but like blocking six would be awesome.
Yeah, it's a bit out of line. If you had a club, I think it would be a little bit better.
Yeah, I agree.
So, to win, you win.
It's, I, I don't know. It's, it's an interesting idea.
Yeah.
But most often, river, river goes check, check and you lose, so.
Which is okay, I mean.
Better and safer to just bet out yourself, no? As the solver was saying.
Two point eighty-five here.
Yeah, I don't hate that either, Danny. I think that's probably how I would have done it. Uh.
Just with the small, big blind being so short? Upsize a little bit more?
That's quite.
I think it's just a thing that Said does.
Yeah, it is terrible.
I, I'm just.
It's a thing. Maybe not quite so big, but I don't know. This could be a thing.
I actually like it better button than UTG because you get to play, you get to play um in position. But I, I, I like it less against a fourteen big blind stacking big blind. Like, he's just gonna correctly fold a lot of hands that you want to call.
I, I, I think, I think this makes more sense if it's like final two tables. And you don't want the big ones to realize equity.
Hmm. The ICM sims say no. The ICM sims say that's the spot where you really often wanna just stick to min raising cuz they're supposed to play so.
A min raise puts enough pressure and that's fine, yeah.
I know people do that a lot, but I just, I don't love it.
What do you do here? Just call or raise?
I'd probably just call in here.
No, versus fifty big blind open, we need to take it to like a, a reasonable four bet size, like twelve or thirteen.
So, oh, I, I, I didn't see the three bet there. I didn't see the three bet.
So if it's a, uh, I, I do you though, is the question. Do you? Okay, cuz it.
Right, Galen, it's ten.
It's a PKO. It's a PKO. So like, I don't hate the idea of cold calling here sometimes.
Cold calling, yeah.
Um, or clicking it to like ten. Um.
I, Peter, you're gonna, uh, me, a, a gallon, you're gonna like the pre-flop, but you're not gonna like the flop, I can tell you that.
Oh, no. Why? Why?
I know, I know, I know. I miss it, yeah.
I think though that our, our sizing pre-flop is a little face up. Um, I think we should have only one size. You should think about what you're gonna do with your whole range. I think that size is probably like thirteen, fourteen, and just go with that.
The size was good, it was too big.
I click, I click pre-flop.
I think clicking it's perfectly fine. It's a cold four bet, like you, you, I mean, and the guy that you're cold four betting. He's either jam or fold. We're basically committing ourselves versus him anyway, which looks pretty strong already, like.
Yeah.
Dobbo's not gonna flat ten, right? Like, we don't have to make it fourteen.
Yeah, I think on the flop, bet like ten percent's quite good, rather than jam.
You mean, he might flat ten, but we're happy with that too.
Yeah, you can bet small, you can check, you can.
Dude, I'm gonna be full of shenanigans on a hand like this. I'm gonna be full of shenanigans on a hand like this.
But if you just call, I would bet one.
Oh, yeah, 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 Danny. That's kinda what I was thinking, like betting one, playing check. Kinda stuff like that.
E ten, yeah.
Here we call when we have a diamond?
Yep, I pulled the diamond, mostly pulled without.
One baby? Is this a card you borrow on? I say yes.
Yes, I think so.
I think with a lot of hands, yeah, but I don't know if it's necessary with ace queen.
The size, I think like, I think it's more like six or seven here.
Yeah, I don't like the size.
And, but, but if you're, if you're betting this hand, this hand, it's smaller cuz it's. It's hard to get value for anything worse if you go big.
Yeah, it's either a check or a bet small.
Yeah, I agree. I think other hands, other hands can't bet big, but this hand can't.
Right, like.
What do you mean? Like, what's, what's he doing with ace ten of hearts? He's not calling a second time. Like, what's he doing with pocket threes?
Why would you check this stern, Danny?
Cuz we.
Cuz you don't have value anymore. On the flop, you had a value bet.
We need to check some hands and this hand's got showdown.
Exactly. You already strengthened his range. He like, he mainly has like pairs and good draws and ace highs. And you're gonna lose like.
Bluff catch on the river.
And you're gonna lose like your value against everything that, that you're beating if you bet, especially if you bet big. You saw the solver was creeping with some tiny bets, but not.
Okay, so Danny, why do you check this turn? Do you think in general, do you think you're?
Uh, can't get value from more ace high anymore. Don't wanna put in more money against five X and four X. I mean, four X might fold, four X specifically might fold, but like, what? Why are we bluffing four X with ace queen? We can hit an ace or queen. Just check, just like, don't get raised.
Did we see bet or did the guy dunk?
We see bet.
We see that. We see that kinda big too, like.
If we see but, usually if we see, if we see bet a lot on the flop, you wanna go polar on the turn. This is not a polar hand.
Exactly. I think this, the, the thirty-three is pretty defensible on flop though, cuz this is like a relatively wet trips. Like five, five, four, I like be thirty-three more, eight deuce, deuce, you could go small.
Also, when the five and the six is paired, they're the worst paired cards for us, uh, against the big blind. Like, I don't even know why we bet in flop.
But we get, we're betting for value. We get called by his jack, his ten, king, queen.
Yeah, but, but like, I think on the five, when the five pairs and the six pairs, I, I think that's the ones. I think six, that's when we wanna have the highest checking frequency.
Uh, I think solver had zero checking frequency.
But thirty-three? Yeah, what's different? The thing Louis was just looking at, the simplest difference, right?
Louis, can you, can you get the, um, reports up for bottom versus big blind, paired balls?
For the flop?
Yeah, paired balls, bottom versus big blind.
What street?
No, just a rapport, reports, flops, flop reports.
Yeah, but for the bottom?
Yeah, bottom versus big blind. Yeah, bottom strategy, got bottom strategy, yeah.
And paired, right? It's all paired? I think it's the filter. Yeah, okay.
Hey Louis, would you get a second? Do you think you could post, uh, link in poker coaching? There isn't one there right now. For the study session.
Well.
It's there on, uh, poker study for you, but not for.
Ah, damn it.
Yeah, cuz I got my, the link from Galen here, so.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
No, that was for Louis.
I haven't set up, but, yeah.
Just gotta press enter.
Yeah, Louis, can you get the, uh, the whole, the, the flops up? Well, for the pad?
And then, okay, so it should be D's, right?
Yeah, can you filter by highest checking frequency?
It shouldn't only be pairs.
Yeah, can you filter by which is the highest checking frequency?
Highest che- checking frequency for?
For the paired boards.
Nope.
Nah, surely you can.
Yeah, there's, um.
There's a filter, there's a filter button under that.
Oh, yeah, if you.
I'll see if I can pull it up. Is this fifty button versus big blind?
Oh, that's not what we want.
Yeah.
Uh, where's the filter?
Okay, I got it. You, you got it as well? Okay, you're searching by B twenty, so if you click the check column, it should filter by highest frequency checks.
No, but how do you do the pair board filter?
Oh, I have it. You want me to, to share? I have.
Reports. Save filter. Oh, it's filters. It's the, um, yeah, that one.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And then.
Yep, that'll do it. Cool.
Oh, wait. Yeah, okay.
There it is. So it's like, it's like high, five, five, high six, six.
Yeah.
Yeah, fours as well. I know queen four four had a lot of checking, like queen four four.
I'm not checking fifty percent on, uh, on ace six six, I'll tell you that.
Gonna raise your ass.
Yeah, definitely.
You're just so vulnerable. Imagine you have like ace nine on ace six six. You bet and get raised.
Yeah, we need to check a lot of, we, we need to check a lot on these, um, middling pad boards, the five, sixes.
Yeah.
Some fours as well.
I guess I don't check enough on the low, like five, five, four, five, five, three. I'm, I'm not checking that enough. Or am I? Maybe I am.
I guess, I guess ace queen does just bet for value, uh, like Tim said.
It's good enough on flop, right? Surely. You'll get called by worse ace highs.
Yep. And you deny a lot, like jack ten or something, two, two, uh, unpaired overcards that are live against you.
Why are we changing our sizing? Are we going down? From two point eight to two?
That's the, see, okay, I want you to take this for a second, Said, as your, your population data right here. Every one of this chat is just like glued to your sizing.
I would notice this right away and I would, I would, I would, you, you either have a big hand or you, you just wanna see a flop.
Exactly. Everyone is pay, every, that's, Arnie, it's funny because it's been a reoccurring theme before you showed up. Everyone has noticed.
I'm sorry, I tried to log in right away, but there was no link there.
Yeah, no, 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 it's good, it's good because we've been telling Said the same thing. Where he's like, uh, you know. He's variable on the strength of his hands, which is not great.
Like, cuz if you wanna have different sizings in different positions, like I see some people will. Raise up a little bit bigger in the cutoff and, and the button, right? But, you know, stay fairly small cuz your ranges are tighter in early position, right?
I think that's fine, yeah.
Which, which is fine, right? But to be like consistently two point eight and then all of a sudden two, it's just sort of like. Then you get punished the first time. He gets it.
All caps, all caps. Well, yeah. And you know, let me just, let me just pull this home. Conversely, to everyone, you know, if you think that an opponent is doing this, then like. Re-bet those, those mid opens light, you know, like ace eight off, looks like a three bet, like good enough. King ten off, good enough, whatever, toss three bet out, see if it works.
I don't like this.
Put the C bet, right? The C bet, it's gonna be good.
That's small with range.
C betting's fine, definitely check here, never bet.
I would go smaller probably on the flop.
The turn.
I think the, right, how, how they do we bet flop, like forty?
Small?
Yeah, it's just like thirty.
Yeah, no, you're right. A little bit more than a small.
Or, oh, no, you're right.
Forty, I mean, with, with this hand in particular, like you would really like to go more like thirty-three, twenty-five?
Turn is a jam.
I mean, yeah, yeah.
You could bet some other hands in range, like halfish pot on that flop. Yeah, no surprise, we're just piling against a better hand.
You just gave four big ones away there.
Yeah.
Well, he, he might have had to pay some on the river, but. It's just too thin.
Uh, is this a flop? Yep, this is a theory fold.
PKO, we cover all three, maybe more. Yeah.
Do you have a raise? Raise a ten?
What? Everyone's all in?
Set, not flush, top pair.
He's, this guy was like, wow.
Wait, the dog to the spot, you lose to every hand. I know, punished for opening queen jack, offsuit under the gun.
He's a bit out of.
Ooh.
This, that, 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 no, that's probably a theory jam, no?
Yeah, the jam's fine.
It could be like the island.
It's gonna be ace, king, ace, queen, jacks, tens, something like that.
Yeah, exactly. Jacks could, jacks could sneak into a not all-in range, but, like, I like it all-in as well. I would say queens, queens plus, you're not allowed to be on there.
Seven and a half or eight with, with.
Said, why do you fold here?
Wait, how deep are we? Oh, we're still early enough, right? Yeah, all right. I mean, but in that.
Call that six, you can.
I still want to make eight or nine with jacks.
Uh, you can bink, uh, two pair, uh, trips on the turn, you draw your flush draw.
This is a jam?
Hmm, I think it's more of a squeeze.
Twenty-five?
Yeah, maybe it is. Hi-jack cutoff.
I like a jam, I think.
It's just, like, it's bottom of range, but, okay.
Oh, he was dropping us. We fell right into the trap, but then we were, ha, ha.
It's a little bit too much, but it's fine, actually.
Maybe there's some.
A little bit deep, eh, for jabbing thirty?
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna do this until, like, twenty-five or, like, twenty. It's actually just, like, theory, it's fine. Thirty's whatever.
Yeah, it's a bit deep.
I guess it'll depend on the big blind, too, right? So, he's gonna call you with, like, ace six, king queen, and king jack or something.
All right, we're going, going bounty hunting. Let's go.
So, we blinded now?
What are you gonna do? Gonna go?
Off, no fold equity.
It's rough, though, against that min raise range. Okay, well, the min raise range is garbage. Cool.
Yeah.
Ooh, let's, let's min raise.
I might have fallen, king queen off.
If, if, this is a PKO?
Oh, yeah, so P P jamming is better.
No, not with aces.
I mean, if you wanna have a simplified, i- if you wanna have a simplified strategy, you could just have a jamming range, rather than have a polar min raise, but range with.
If we have a big bounty, we are covered. We can offer the bounty as, like, a sacrifice.
You don't wanna be able to open, like, queen ten oh, and.
Yeah.
Off eleven big blinds, it's okay to have an only jam strategy when everyone covers you.
Yeah, I agree. That's fine. Like, I would say, like, make sure we still have min raises at, like, fourteen, fifteen, but at eleven, twelve, I can give it up.
I love stealing off eleven bigs.
Yeah, feels good.
King, king ten and get it through, you know?
Feels good.
It doesn't go through very often. Dude, do you have a time?
I had one yesterday.
Nice, nice triple up.
Dude, I, in a live tournament, I done it off a short stack. I raised, like, ace eight off of, like, ten from early position. And this guy was convinced I had aces. Like, I ended the hand, he's like, oh, I thought you have aces. Guess not.
Yeah, the tiny, the tiny three bets, the tiny three bets live also, like, when I three bet to, like, four point eight, five big blinds, they're like, whoa, why so small? It's always aces.
Are we gonna make a royal?
It's always aces.
Oh, so scary, the guy just flating.
As well. They're just like, the one dol- the one dolled in player might fold, but people are thinking that much. They're just like, ah, it's so.
The guy, the guy flattening is fine. I'm not worried about it.
Right. Yeah, flattening, it's not ideal, but it's, it's okay.
One diamond.
Oh, what? Quit. Okay, we win that one.
Well, we win the, we win the big pot, yeah.
We win the main or the side. Yeah, yeah. Ooh. Yeah, I'm okay with this.
Depends, kind of depends on the bounty. All right.
Oh, oh, wait.
Jesus.
We got the.
Oh, my God, I thought we got stamped, and I thought we stamped, stamped, and then it was a triple scale.
I went through the same thing. I saw the five, I was like, ah, and then I saw the thirties.
I saw the five and my range stopped there.
Exactly.
So, he has us at, like, eight percent on the flop. Yeah, we have him at eight percent on the flop. He has us at about.
Man, I was watching a PLO stream yesterday, and I actually couldn't read the board in this one hand, and I'm still, I took a screenshot. I'll show you guys after, cuz I'm perplexed. I don't know what the hell happened. I still don't know what happened.
Was it high-low?
No.
Usually when people are like, usually when people are like, how did I lose half this pot? It's like, it's high-low, you're playing high-low.
And so, there's a thing, the hand strength is not exactly the same as when.
Like, short deck PLO.
Is it like the flush is, like, uh, better than the blouse? Something like this?
Short deck.
In short deck.
In short deck. Uh, I don't like that two point five big blind raise there.
Uh. Is this the final table? Okay, so this is the final table, guys.
Already? All right. We're on the.
What do you do here on FD? It's a fold, right?
Yeah, it's fold.
We ramble.
It's a hunt.
What is this?
Expecting him to have better hands, and he, he has dominated, and we think.
Little spicy.
I'm not getting in there without, like, I don't know, king nine suited.
Yeah.
King, something like that. And also, like, it's always the caveat. If he has a huge bounty, we could talk.
I mean, that was pretty down there.
I agree.
Four suited.
I agree. But, like, sometimes you get somebody at the final table, like, four big blind, and they have, like, thirty bounty, so.
Paul here or jam?
Jam.
Jam, jam.
Jam.
That seems.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
Ace, this seems to be a.
Jam, this is like slam dunk jam.
Yeah, that guy's third in chips. He's gotta be so respectful.
Yeah.
I would jam super wide.
Yo, yeah, no, I'm jamming, like, I'm jamming like a third of a day.
With the kings.
Offsuiters.
Jack seven suited, I'm, I'm all in here, for sure.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. Well, cuz now we have to do this, we have to realize.
I mean, if I knew, there'd, there'd be two jacks, yeah, sure.
All right, ten, eight suited, I'm all in. How about that?
We got value, okay. No, way too big, way too big. When we do this, we have the same.
The hand.
We, like, have the same fold that could, you, you guys cut off, but if, if big blind wakes up with, like, we just lose more.
Look, look at the SPR. You don't need to keep it.
I think we call, if we jams and fate rejams, we can fold as bad as it feels, I think.
It's kind of cool to get a small three bet in and, um, and get big blind out of the pot, so we can just, like, go with it against cutoff. I kind of like that.
Small three seems okay.
Yeah, if you make it five there, if the small blind goes all in, he reopens the action for you, too.
That is a good point.
So, this is, this is a spot where I like a small three bet.
Yeah, small just to get river cooler out of there? Yeah, so it doesn't.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Cuz you really don't get to play possum just ever. Oh, with a min raise, why not just, oof, why not just rip it?
I think this is cute, but, uh, I would go on to. I would do this with the suited one, maybe.
I think when we're that short, I wanna have, I don't wanna have a min raising strategy. I wanna have a limping and jamming strategy.
Yeah.
And mainly just a jamming strategy.
Mainly just.
Big blinds, when we cover.
I mean, limbs, okay.
You can jam at thirteen. I think that's actually okay.
You're gonna have some limbs, though, as well.
I think, I think in, like, kind of this configuration, you're gonna have jams, and then you're gonna have min raises and, uh, and then you're gonna have, like, a few folds. I don't think I'm gonna have a lot of limbs in that situation.
I think we can ISO to, like, three point three, three point five, if we're feeling it more than three.
Wouldn't we wanna jam that ace ten, though?
No, too good.
Just, just lump call.
Uh, no, not lump call, ISO.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, like, raise it up, and then him call.
Yeah, exactly. He's small on them.
Yeah, cuz he limped in and just called, right? So, yeah.
This might be the end. Oh, we got it.
Nice hold.
Cooler, very nice.
Oh, oh, man.
I am holding here. What about you?
It's like a, a pip or two too bad, right?
Yeah, yeah, easy.
It's too much to risk with the queen eight, I think. It's kind of close, though.
What, what's your calling range, your queen nine?
You don't think it's close to, I think it's close.
No.
I'm gonna look this one up. Heads up, twenty-six.
Crazy.
Raise.
Queen jack, king queen.
Worst one we're calling off is, like, queen ten here.
Queen ten. Yeah, I set a pip or two.
I mean.
Oh, queen nine, you guys folding?
Yes.
I think it's close with queen nine.
Especially as an exploit, like, what do you, how do you expect his range to be compared to a theory range? I expect it to be too heavy on aces and pairs.
Yeah, the theory range is aces and pairs, that's all it is.
Uh, but now the theory range has some jack five suited, some king six oh, some six five suited.
Tim, yes, you can pick a few combos out, but the, dominated by offsuit aces.
Exactly, that's the thing. If you pull out the, like, seven combos we're doing well against, then we're like, we're not happy about this, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, is king six really that different than ace four?
No, no, I mean, this one's okay.
Oh, and eight. Woo.
We get there.
And then.
Oh, shit. There it is. Wait, he found the king five off rejam? What the hell?
I find this a lot playing heads up. People have.